This episode of Southeast Iowa Today is brought to you by Greiner Auto Body of Washington, Iowa, using state-of-the-art techniques and decades of experience to get your car back on the road after an accident. Car Doctor of Washington, Iowa, no matter who Frankenstein'd it, they can fix it, clean it, and customize it. McDonald Boneyard of Kyoto, Iowa, for all your farm equipment and auto recycling needs. For great food, it's your choice. Your Choice Family Restaurant of Wayland, Iowa, open Tuesday through Sunday. Come to our cruise ends this summer on the second Tuesday of the month, June through September. Gerling Repair of Winfield, Iowa, if your mower is dead, call Fred. Your Husqvarna, Aaron's, and Gravely dealer, Fred also fixes and sells snow blowers. B&amp;B Propane and the family of Jet Stops. Dutch Market and Coffee Talk of Washington, Iowa. Dutch Market can handle all of your grocery needs. They even have a conference room you can use for free. Coffee Talk's drive-thru is open and ready to serve you coffee, energy drinks, sandwiches, baked goods, and ice cream. They all present you the award-winning Southeast Iowa Today. Here's the author of Christie's Journey: The Beat Goes On, and your host, John Bain.
Thank you, announcer Cody Roy of NewEnglandDukes.com for your golden pipes and wonderful introduction. Today is, actually, tonight, it's Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, and I attended a candidate forum here for the special election that's coming up for the Mount Pleasant Community School District School Board. And we're going to take you to that meeting. There were about thirty-five or so people here tonight at the event, and you're going to hear from Mr. Leaky and Mr. Overberg, and we'll get to it right now.
Good evening, everyone. I am Rachel Adie with the Mount Pleasant Area Chamber Alliance, and thank you for being with us tonight. The Mount Pleasant Area Chamber Alliance is a nonprofit, membership-based organization with the mission of enhancing quality of life for the people of Henry County through economic growth. We rely and encourage volunteer participation from area businesses, organizations, and individuals that support the community. We serve as a focal point and advocate for the business interests of Mount Pleasant area at local, regional, state, and national levels. We would like to thank the Mount Pleasant Community School District for hosting, allowing us to be here tonight, and K-I-L-J for co-hosting. It's important to understand the format for this conversation tonight. This is not a debate, but instead, an opportunity for you to get to know these two candidates. We're going to start off with opening comments from each candidate. We'll give them, they will then move on to prepared questions from the Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Committee, and the candidates will have two minutes each to answer each question. In fairness, none of the candidates have seen the questions in advance. So let's begin with opening comments. We're going to start alphabetically, so Mr. Leaky, you go first.
Well, Todd's first, huh?
Yes. L.
All right. So, I, Todd Leaky, I am a 1979 graduate of Mount Pleasant Community High School. I spent five years with you and I, had way too much fun. I continued to take a broader range of classes, not just science classes, so I had to pay for next year. But I had fun. And then, from there, I went to, I got a biology education degree, and I went to Davis County. I taught there for four years. I taught four years of middle school science. Came over to New London, I taught there seven years, junior high science, and then moved to Fairfield to teach three years there. And at that point, my family, which was Denise and I and the two boys, we moved to Fairfield, and we lived there seven years. I was teaching there for three years. While I was teaching at Fairfield, I went to the University of Iowa, received my school administration degree in 1998, same year. I moved to North Mahaaska during the week to be a junior, senior high principal. I did that for two years, and then I came back, lived in Fairfield still, drove to New London every day to be the principal there at the middle school there. And from there, somebody made the mistake of hiring me, and I spent nineteen years here in Mount Pleasant as the assistant principal, and then as the principal, was encouraged to get my superintendent license. I didn't always intend to do that, but when, we had two more kids when we lived in Fairfield, so we had four by then, and I decided it was more important I attend their events and go get my administrative degree. But then, they graduated, and I was encouraged to go get my administrative license, and I said, "I'm old." And the response was, "You can do it." So I went back to the University of Iowa, got my EDS in school administration, and earned a license to be a superintendent, went to Nashville Plainfield, and Robert Rock, and they shared superintendent, and I was there for the last three years. Forty years. Went by fast, and...
So did the two minutes.
All right, Mark.
Good evening. My name is Mark Overberg. I am, thank the Chamber Alliance and K-I-L-J for hosting this forum tonight. I have been a lifelong resident of Salem, Iowa, and proud to be my whole life in the country. My wife, Kim, and I have been married for thirty-six years. Kim has run an in-home daycare for the past twenty-five years, which she is very well-respected and helps the development and well-being of the children in our community. We have three grown children, one of which is an elementary school teacher here in Iowa. In fact, education runs deep in our family. I have twelve family members that are also schoolteachers. So I have firsthand experience of the passion, the challenges and commitment it takes to, for strong education with this, not only as a parent, but as a family dedicated to education. I have worked at Continental for thirty-five years, starting out on the production floor, worked my way up to production manager. And in my journey of the thirty-five years at Continental, I've been involved in problem-solving, effective communication, team building, and planning ahead. I also farmed for twenty-five years. That has gave me the responsibility, a financial responsibility, and dealing with the uncertainties of life, meaning you have the uncertainty of the weather, the grain markets, and how to deal with it. I'm running for the school board to ensure that the kids, the teacher, and the future of this district has representation for the community, so we can keep moving into the future with our kids.
All right. So, Mark, we'll start the questions tonight with you. What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a school board member? You have two minutes.
I feel that, starting with my background in farming, for the financial responsibility and the uncertainty of that, because you always have to have a plan going forward, and those plans don't always work out due to the fact of the weather and the grain market. So you always got to have a backup plan to figure out what you're going to do and how you're going to overcome that with what's going on with it. My thirty-five years at Continental, starting out on the shop floor and working my way up, there's a lot of things that has taught me as far as problem-solving, effective communication, team-building, how to communicate with others, collaboration with the different departments to get things done. You know, you want to end with the same results, but you don't always get along. Yeah, I shouldn't say get along, you have different sort of opinions, but you want to get to the end result. So I figure the, the work in production and working my way up gives me the skills to be an asset to the school board as far as financial and thinking outside of the box of different plans, and coming up, ending up with the same results as they want to, but maybe in a different way.
Thank you. Todd, do you need me to repeat the question?
Skills, experiences qualify for me to be a...
Correct.
Okay. Well, obviously, forty years in education has a lot to do with my, my experiences. Along the way, as a teacher, I had experiences that shaped me as a teacher. I wouldn't hire me now in my first year teaching. I was not ready. I had great mentors, and by the time I, every time, every time I shift at school, I got new mentors that taught me new things. And so the fact that I've had the experience to learn from others, I think is beneficial. When you come to a school board, you're one of seven people, and you represent the district, you have to make decisions best for the district, and it's not always about what you want, which is a thing I had to overcome in teaching at first. I have experience with bond issues, I have experience with the staff, creating a welcoming environment for the staff. I've had deal contracts, I've had people that were unhappy with me, and we had to do what the right thing was to do, and it's the same thing here. As a school board member, you make decisions based on what's best for the district, not necessarily the things you want to do, but what's going to be best for the district.
Thank you. So Todd, we'll start with you on the next question. If elected, what would you hope your key accomplishments of the board during your years of service?
Well, you know, we, we live in, right now, we live in a divided community. There are several things that divide people, but I think that by operating in the public, I, bringing things to the public, educating the public, that we can bring things together. And, you know, I have lots of questions. One of my big questions, you know, is about facilities. I'd love to see the, all the conversations, I would love to have heard all the conversations that happened and why they're consistently made the way they're made, and I think that's what the public was looking for as well. I looked at the survey results, and one of the big things that was a thorn was grade alike schools. Educationally, any educator's going to tell you that's the best, best way to do things, and I think we need to show people why that was done and why it's, why it's better for the kids.
Thank you. Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
If elected, what would you hope your key accomplishments of the board during your years of service?
Transparency. What I mean by that is, I think, as Todd said, there's seven of us, we work for the community. I feel that it needs to be transparent on stuff that's being done. A lot of this, I've attended the board meetings since last October, there's a lot of stuff being discussed that does not get out to the public. And I feel, if I was elected, transparency is where we need to be. Like I said, it was called a central campus, it is now two campuses, and I don't think the, all the public knows about that. So that would be my main key issue. And the other thing is listening. Like the survey come back, there's a lot of things that come back that are, that's eye-opening, a lot of things to focus on, but that would be my main thing, would be a transparent school board member.
Thank you. Both of you kind of touched on this, but we'll go ahead and ask it, and Mark, we'll start with you. An individual school board has, excuse me, an individual school board member has no authority, only the board as a whole can make the decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to an effective operation of the board as a whole? Mark, we'll start with you.
To be an effective, an effective member of the board, you have to work together. And what I mean by that is, we all have, our end goal is going to be the same, what's best for the kids and the teachers. There may be a lot of different ways to get there, but we got to work together as a board to come up with that solution to get there. I've dealt with a lot of issues out at work as far as doing that to come up with different ideas on how to switch things. It may not be the most popular way, but it's what's best for the company, and I feel that'd be the same practice to put in as a school board member, that you would, you know, you got to do what's best for the school district and not have a personal agenda going into it.
Thank you. Todd, would you like me to repeat the question?
No.
You have two minutes.
Effective school board member, first off, it's, it's one of seven. I had one board that wanted everything to be, they were five board members, they wanted everything to be a five oh vote, and they all wanted to be in the greens, which I thought left out the opportunity for the discussion that needed to happen, because the ones who would, were in the minority, wouldn't speak up and state their side, and then they didn't have the debate in public, which I think, I've not been known to keep my mouth shut very well when I have something that I'd like to say. So if there are things that need to be talked about, I think as a board member that we, that we have those conversations, and then when we, when we vote, it's over. You know, we voted, and that's what the board as a whole decided to do, and that's, and we need to push for that.
Thank you. So Todd, we'll start with you for this next question. What do you see as the current challenges facing public education in our state and our country?
Our governor? Well, number one is funding, and in all, in all seriousness, the legislature has enacted some laws that are troubling. First off, they're trying to destroy the AEA system, which schools the size of Mount Pleasant, we rely on them, and the smaller schools even rely on them more than the big schools. The big schools don't need them. And so, and so I think it's a police to big people to, to destroy the AEA's, the private school vouchers. If they're Iowa students and we have to educate them, I'm all for that, but put the same restrictions on the money that the public schools have. You know, there's, there's no guarantee, and so there's how many million dollars go into private schools with no qualifications on what's dealt with the money. So financing is huge. That's, that's the part that I think is the trick is, is going to be able to, how to finance things. They keep giving us pockets of money for this and pockets of money for that, and then they tell us we can't, can't spend it on, which is frustrating.
Thank you. Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
What do you see as the current challenges facing public education in our state and in our country?
Well, I'll just be honest with you, I don't know all the financial ins and outs of it like Todd. I, just a little bit that I know, going to the school board meetings, that you have different funding for different areas. I know the school district relies heavily on the state for funding, and they keep dropping it year and year to make it tougher for the school to come up with a budget. So that is something I'd have to learn and to get more knowledge on, so that's the best I can answer.
Thank you. Mark, we'll start with you on this next question. What is your vision for the district in the next four, ten, and twenty years, and how, and what will you do to help us get there?
Why? Whether it's the school district or Continental or our work, we go through the same exercise, visionary future, you know, what's our short-term, mid-term, long-term goals. For the school district right now, the short-term, four years, I think there's a lot of issues to handle, one being spaces, space at the elementary schools. What do we do about that? I've brought up in, at school board meetings, you know, modular classrooms. This could be temporary, I've hooked into it, this is something that I think is very doable, see how it works, and move on with that. Ten-year plan, I think we got to get something a little more definite instead of like modular classrooms for the space to get what we need. Another thing, you know, and this is for the everything, the short, mid, and long term, we need to retain our teachers here. The retention at some of our elevens is astounding to me, why we're not keeping them. I'd like to get our teachers to where we keep them here, keep the same teachers that help the education of our kids, and, but I think that's, you know, the goal.
Thank you. Todd, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm good. So, within four years, we as a community need to come together and arrive at a plan for our elementary buildings. How, how do we right-size our elevens? How do we have the correct number of sections? And how, how do we do that so that every student can be successful? So within, I think within four years, that needs to be done. While we're doing that, one of the things I read was that Lincoln and Harlan were not up to snuff in terms of construction-wise. I guess the community needs to know why, what's wrong. And I, I've been gone for the past three years, I may have missed that in the conversation, so, but then, continuously for the ten to twenty years, always looking to improve the educational experience of our students. I'm not hot on AI. I'm not, my biggest fear is that the kids don't learn to think. It's not so important what they, what they learn and what they can memorize, but what can they do with it? And I, and I'm not seeing how AI makes them think and plot it in ways the teachers can monitor. I'm not saying they don't do it, but can the teachers monitor? Can they, can they demonstrate those skills that they need? And are our teachers able to monitor that and accurately measure what they're learning? So, so the ten to twenty years down the road, you know, we're evolving as technology evolves faster than, than people can learn it. So, you know, what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, and the methods and things that we use, that we teach it with are going to be significant.
Thank you. Todd, we'll stick with you for this next question. We both have touched on it. The school district has been discussing the future of all elementary schools. Please provide your thoughts on the proposed elementary school campuses plan. Todd, we'll start with you.
Well, no offense to people who put the plan together, but like I said, so, so we, we want to consolidate, so we have fewer buildings. I get that. We want to provide every student the same opportunity, that makes sense. So, the best way in my mind is that we open a discussion up, we have a discussion, why exactly are we going to just put three, four, or five at Wesleyan and then keep pre-K one, two at Van Allen, what we add on to Van Allen? We already have classroom space in Lincoln and, and Harlan, it doesn't seem that's going to be used. You may have answered this question, I don't know the answer, why would, why would we plan that? But, like I said, in four years, we need to have that decision made, where we're going to be built, built, and beyond the way.
Thank you. Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah.
The school district has been discussing the future of all elementary schools. Please provide your thoughts on the proposed elementary school campuses.
I agree with Todd on that as far as why. And what I mean by that is, you know, we have the room, and my big concern with it is, a lot of it is traffic flow, the safety of it. To me, it'll increase a lot more traffic flow out there on Broadway and at Van Allen. But I think we can utilize our four elementary schools better than what we can with the central campus. And I, I'm personally for the neighborhood schools. They're grade alike, I don't know really enough about it, but I've researched what I can, and I'm not in favor of it right now, and I, my opinion can be changed. But my thing is, we need to get the input from the community, the parents and the teachers on doing something like this. You know, this is a major investment, a major change all the way around, and it should come from our community, because that's who we're representing, is the community.
Thank you. We're going to shift gears and start with you, Mark, tonight on this next question. Preparing our future workforce for success is necessary for this community. How can the school district better engage with local business and with career technical education programs?
We have got to start with that, with our administration, and what I mean by that, the superintendent, the principal, to get them on board with it. And then we need to survey the students. What do they need to be prepared for life outside of high school? Whether it's a college, a trade school, a career, or the service. And we need to partner with the industry, the factories in town to do that, whether it's an internship or taking tours. In the last two weeks, we've gave, Continental has given tours to almost twenty kids, high school kids out, to show them what it takes for manufacturing to run. It's not only the people making the product, but it takes engineers to run, maintenance techs, quality techs. There's a lot involved to make a product here in Mount Pleasant. We also had an intern, a high school senior from Waco come down and shadow our engineering department for a week, and that went very well. To do this, Continental contacted the high school to get the ball rolling. But we would like to be, as a Continental facility, be on the pilot program to get this started, because I can see it benefit everybody all the way around, the students, to give them some sense of direction when they get out of high school. It'll help the manufacturers here in town to promote their product, to maybe get some workforce out there at the kids right out of high school, because everybody knows that unemployment's low, and everybody's struggling to get a workforce to keep the industry going.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm okay. The career tech thing is something that's, that's been a struggle here at the high school in particular, getting businesses that will allow our kids to come in and, and do more than tour, you know, stay in there and get the experiences. You're right, the tours, where it would take us to, take you through all the levels of the, of the jobs at the industry, so that if a, if a person just wanted to go work a forty-hour week, take their hard hat off, go home, and assemble things, and that's what they want to do, that's great. If they want to be the guy that fixes the machines and loves the challenge of, something breaks and I have to figure out how to fix it, to the person who designs things and who, who manages things, you know, we need to, it needs to be diverse, a diversified experience, which, which I know that we haven't got right now, but we, we do have some programs in place, I think, that are working on that, just not as quick as everyone like anything.
Thank you. Todd, we'll start with you on this next question. Quality schools are a key component for business recruitment. How best would you describe Mount Pleasant Community School District to a potential new business and/or relocating family?
To a new business, I, I would tell them that our students have the ability, have the opportunities to become wherever they want. We have students that are doctors, lawyers, engineers, we have students that are farmers, we have students who, who don't finish high school, but they go to work and they have worked for, they still work, and, and they're making, they're making a family, they're making it at home. So, you know, we have all kinds of kids, we provide them the opportunities, it would be nice to expand some of those opportunities, but it's, it's a quality place with quality people, and it's kind of not fair, but I've been subbing the past little while, and the kids here are tremendous. I subbed one day and the kids, they were better than I ever had kids in my class.
Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think, as Todd said, you know, we have a good community, we have good kids in the school system, and we just got to promote that. And from the question before, the, you know, the CTE is something that greatly benefits us to promote that actual cause of getting industry in here, you know, that would be huge to be, you know, they could come in and look and say, "Hey, we got these kids, they're in this program, you know, once they get out of high school, they are ready to go." You know, could there be an internship to where kids, you know, work for a company and, you know, the industry pays for the, the tuition if they do work at the company for so long? You know, there's a lot of options out there for these kids. We just need to pursue it and get it, and I think that would be the selling point to any industry coming into town.
Thank you. Mark, we'll start with you on the next question. How do you envision the school district engaging in early childhood care?
That is one to where is something that needs to be done. I mean, the early childhood care is something that is needed, and how to pursue it, you know, I honestly don't know. I mean, this is something that I've not really thought about that much, but it's something that I'd have to do my homework on, and get back with you on an answer on that if anybody wanted to know, because I, I really don't know.
Thank you. Todd, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. One of the things I noticed in the, in the blueprints from Van Allen was that they were going to combine a daycare center and pre-K program, which somehow to make that happen would be fantastic, because then you would have kids who are in daycare... which somehow to make that happen would be fantastic, because then you would have kids who are in daycare who would walk down the hallway or wherever to get to the preschool. And until the state makes preschool, they pass for a full day, kids go half a day, probably is plenty. And they go to daycare the other half a day. It's the same building. It makes it easy for the parents. But in terms of the daycare, it would be a fantastic thing to add to our district as a school-sponsored daycare.
Thank you. Todd, we'll stay with you for this next question. How do you plan to prioritize spending in the school budget to ensure both academic achievement and student well-being?
The easy answer would be to figure out how to hire more guidance counselors and pairs that work with kids directly, either in one-on-one or small groups. But then I've got to figure out where to take money from. So, you know, that would be, you know, preschool ad funds. Preschools don't cost that much to teach, so get more money for various things. Early intervention, getting to them early. It's, I would spend more money there than I would save, I think.
Thank you. Mark?
That's a tough one. And like I said, the little bit that I've been going to the school board meetings, the juggling act to get the money to support, you know, more guidance counselors, the teachers that we need and stuff. It would be a hard one to figure out, but I think it's doable. It's something that, you know, a person would have to sit down with the board and figure out how to do it. And, you know, that's the short of it, something like that.
Thank you. Mark, this week, the Mount Pleasant Community School District released the results of a community survey. What were your top three takeaways from the results and why?
Top three. One, that they did want to do the central campus. Two was the Great Alight. And three was the Neighborhood Schools. I think the central campus, that comes back to what I said earlier about the transparency. The community did not have a full picture of what was going on and what the money was being spent on. Like I said before, the Great Alight, that is something that showed up on the survey that I'd say is not going as well as planned. You know, that is something I'd have to look more into. I'd have to ask questions, you know, get the teachers involved and the parents involved to why they don't like it and figure out what it is. And Neighborhood Schools, everything has its pros and cons. I understand the Great Alight, what they're trying to accomplish, but also the Neighborhood Schools. If you've got K through fifth grade in an elementary school, you've got the younger kids interacting with the older kids, the older kids interacting with the younger kids. I know when our kids went to school, you know, the fifth graders would go to the kindergarten for a reading class and read to the younger kids. They had played together out at recess, and they'd have that bond, you know, the younger or older. To work Great Alight, you know, it's all the same grade. Are they going to interact with kindergartens? And, you know, they're dropping off at multiple sites instead of just one. So, and as, like I said, that's all we have.
Thank you. Todd?
Number one was the dislike for the Great Alight buildings. That was vastly unpopular. It's unpopular. I would love to have conversations with people, why they're against it. Is it a matter of convenience, or is it, do they have issues that have merit for why they're concerned? I would like to have the opportunity to tell my like Great Alight schools. But the big one being, when Denise I moved back from Fairfield, Van Allen was a golden child, because they had new housing developments, so they had a wealthier clientele. And over time, that shifted to Lincoln. Then Lincoln was the popular school, and now I've moved away and Salem's getting it done. So, different teachers at all those buildings, but they've been making success different ways. Second thing, thirty-seven percent support for the central campus. I would strongly advocate for getting a higher percentage of support before we try to any bond issue. It seems like it might be money, good money after bad to try right now. And then the other thing is the people's knowledge of why decisions are made. I don't think there's, I know the board has reasons they made the decision, but I'm not sure if the community has kept up or if they're aware of what those things are.
Thank you. So now we'll turn it to the audience. We do have time for a few questions. Please have a clear, concise question, no speeches, and please do not repeat a topic that has already been discussed. Yes, Diana?
Okay. We know that the community is very unhappy. How are you going to help the community to soothe them? Because some of us are really kind of wondering. And there are people who are in the public community and private.
Todd, do you go first?
Okay. So, the first thing is the Donovan Group. They're the folks that put together the results of the survey, and I thought they did a wonderful job. I worked with them in Nashua. And our contract, I hope yours is the same, was we paid them so much per month, and they did whatever we wanted that month. And so, just put, throw things on the board. We want to build central campus. We want to do this with it. Here are the things we thought about. Here's the reason why we wanted to do it. Here's the things we didn't want, reasons we shouldn't do it. And this is why we decided to do it. I think spreading that information would be huge and do it for all the decisions.
Mark?
I agree with you. There's a lot of happy, unhappy people in our community. And I'll start with the survey. It was something, they hired a company to do a job, and to me, they didn't do the job. They did not, they hired them to do it, and they only did it halfway. It'd be like me hiring somebody to spray a field, and they sprayed half of it and called it good. As far as I'm concerned, they ought to go back on them and say, I want to have my money back. Because they did not fulfill their agreement they made to them. Had nothing to do with the school board at all. It was all the Donovan Group. And once again, you know, I keep talking about transparency and communication. And the one thing I took out of the survey was, the majority of the people, over sixty percent, get the communication what the school's doing on the radio. I think we need to maybe have more than one spot a week out there. You know, John talks every week out there about what's going on. Maybe we need to have a school board member talk. What's going on in the school board meeting? What are we spending the money on? To get the community aware of what's going on, keep them informed. And then the other thing is, is what I'd like to see if I was elected. Maybe once a month or once every two months, we have an open forum to the public at the school board meeting. I know it's challenging, but it'd have to be a very controlled setting, that it doesn't get out of hand. But I think the community needs to be heard, and the school board needs to listen, because we are working for the community. That's who we're working for.
Next. Yes, in the back. If you would state your name along with it.
Neil Kobo. The federal debt is thirty-seven trillion dollars. We spent as much money on interest last year as we did on the taxes. Many of these people are bankrupt, because their share of the federal debt is more than they appropriate. Is it wise to spend more money than necessary? And have you calculated, if you're going to spend forty million dollars, what responsibility does each tax give you?
Mark, we'll start with you.
Yes. As far as the research I did, it affects every property owner in the district. Property taxes will go up. I calculated mine alone. If they would do the bond issue, mine would go up about fifteen percent of what I'm paying. I don't like either. We need to be good stewards of the money as a school board member. What I mean by that is, I don't think we need to spend the forty million. There's going to bond, I think, twenty-five, twenty-six million. Then there's going to borrow against a penny, future earnings of the penny sales tax, a million a year. I think we need to take that million a year and invest it in our schools that we have right now and do the upgrades we need. We know what we have. So, that's why I say, I don't think we need to do it. I think we need to spend our money more wisely. And not, if we borrow against that penny sales tax for as long as the bond, what if something comes up and then we're going to have to borrow money again? I think we need to have this money coming in. So what if we build a little extra, then we could make a major improvement to one of the schools as we go forward.
Todd?
In terms of the tax implications, two things affected. Bond issue would ask for two dollars and seventy cents per thousand. It can be done so that, that would mean that a person with a hundred thousand dollar house would pay an extra two hundred and seventy dollars a year. So if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house, it'd be five hundred and forty. So, the other thing is, if you run a bond issue specifically stating that you're going to use a penny sales tax bond, you actually get a better interest rate and you can use the penny. Or you can use the two seventy. It can go either way. So in the year that you have the penny sales tax money, you can use that. In the year that your property taxes have went up because your values increased too much, you could use a little more of the penny. I mean, it's a little bit flexible if it's done the correct way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Lee Bradley.
Katie, I failed Katie on the other end for the listener at home.
Well, first of all, I do think the purchase of the Iowa Wesleyan campus was a bargain. However, I want to know how each of you feel about the six million dollar figure to demolish the PEO library building, rather than to spend maybe a million to update it and make it handicap accessible.
Mr. Henderson, was it six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to demol?
It's less than that. We have a...
The survey said six million.
The survey said six million, but I think the results said six hundred and thirty thousand. So, Lee, it's not six million, but I think your question is still valid.
It boils down to usability. If the cost to tear the building down is six hundred and thirty thousand, and what can you do with the space? What can you create? What's it going to cost? It's a cost-benefit analysis, and I haven't done it. But I would hope to see that happen before anything happened to that building. It's a beautiful building. And I agree with you, the place that we bought was a bargain.
Mark?
The purchase of the campus was a bargain for what they paid for it. But I think it's costing more than anticipated for all the upkeep and to get it to where it needs to be. By the end of the summer, there'll be about two and a half million dollars invested out there. And they'll have the gem to show for it. What can we do with it? I don't know. You know, if it was a wrong purchase, do you start selling off parts of it? I don't know. Would that line lock you for future expansion? It would. But, you know, there's a lot that still needs to be sorted out going forward from here with the survey coming back. And the six hundred and thirty thousand to demolish it? And then what? Then you got, if it's going to be a parking lot, then you got the cost of that also. So, and it was all in the survey, what is it going to cost and everything like that. So, there's a lot of uncertainty, and I know that. I feel it too. So, biggest thing is just, we just got to work together as a community to come up with the best solution.
Yes?
What made you decide to run for school board?
Mark, you can go first.
You ever hear the saying, "Put up or shut up"? As I said, I've been going to the school board meetings since last October. School board members building. I do voice my concerns. And I feel, instead of just complaining about the problem, I want to be part of the solution. I want to get involved, instead of just sitting back and complaining about, oh, the school board's doing this wrong, they're doing this wrong. I want to be involved, figure out what's going on, be part of the solution, and help the community work through this situation.
Thank you, Todd.
I moved back to the community at the beginning of July last year, and people have been telling me different things. They're unhappy about this, they're unhappy about that. They're happy with this, they're happy about that. And so I've been paying attention. And then the issue about the school building on the central campus is kind of puzzling to me. My only objection to that place is that there was a railroad track right behind the parking lot by the building. And I've said this to John, I said, John, I don't have a problem with that, as long as you put a fence around the entire parking lot so that a kid can't, without walking around the fence and then going the other way, get to the railroad tracks. So I've had an interest in what's going on. In March of this year, early March, I flew to Paris to see my, one of my sons, so Tanner's in Paris. And when I got to Paris, later that day, John called and said, hey, we have a reservation on the school board. The school board's talking about people that they might want to appoint to that position. Would you be interested? I said, well, either I can sit here and complain, or I can try to get involved. And so I said, well, I'd be interested. And then while I was in Paris, and then from Paris, I went to London to see my other son, I kept reading the KLJ News, and I knew that there was a group petition together to ask for an election. And so when I got back from Europe, I went to the superintendent's office, and I asked for papers to run for school board. Turned those in on, I think, April seventh, April eighth, wasn't it?
Great. Any other questions? Yes? No, what am I going to have, a microphone? We're live on KLJ.
Jody Reister. What are your views on keeping Salem open? And at what cost will you go to keep it open?
Todd, we'll let you go first.
Okay. Salem is an emotional issue. It has to be what's in the best interest of the school district, whether it's keeping it open or whether it is closing it. But it has to come down to what's best for all the kids in the district. We could talk for length on why I think it's a good idea to keep it open and why I think that it's not fair. But I want to have actual numbers and facts in front of you before I have any kind of conversation like that.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, this is, it's very close to home. They say it's a high-cost school to keep open. But what are we doing to try to lower the cost? Right now, nothing. I've looked into, actually, I got a guy looking into solar panels out there. What will it cost to get the school to be self-sufficient on solar panels? I got cost on modular classrooms. They say there's not enough space out there, and there's plenty of ground to put classrooms out there. There's capacity out at Salem. When, if I did my figures right, it can hold fifty more kids. Are we given the opportunity to Mount Pleasant residents to have their kids transfer down to Salem? I feel if we would make investments into Salem to show the community and correct the surrounding communities that it's going to stay open, instead of it being on the talking block every five years that it's going to close, I think the open enrollment would come up. If we can have stability there, and that would help lower the cost, the more kids we can get down into Salem, it would lower the cost. And I think it would come off the table as a school that's going to close every five years.
We have time for one more question. Any takers? All right, gentlemen, we'll end... All right, gentlemen, we'll end tonight with two minutes of closing remarks from each of you. Mark, you get to go first this time.
Okay. Thank you, you, for the opportunity to speak tonight. As someone who's worked his way up in the past thirty-five years at Continental, from the production Ford to production manager, I bring with me real-world experience in solving problems, leading people, effective communication, and team building. I feel this is a great asset that I can bring to the school board. I've been directly involved in major expansions, managed people and processes, and I've learned the importance of clear communication. My background also in farming brings the responsibility of financial decision-making and to having a plan for the uncertainties when stuff comes up, to have a backup plan when it's going to be there. Education, as I stated, runs deep in our family with as many school teachers that I have. So I know firsthand of the problems and challenges and the commitment it takes to be a school teacher and to have our students to be successful. So once again, I want to thank you for tonight and here are my views of how I stand. And once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Todd?
I have been in education for forty years. I retired, tried that, bored out of my mind. I love this school district, I love these kids, I want to see them grow. I want to see our district grow. And as an administrator, I think every teacher would tell you that I push academics probably more than I should have. But growth is important to me, and growth of this district and this town and the community drive me to want to serve. And I know that it's not going to be fun, people are going to chew my tail, other people are going to be happy with me. But we have, I have to stick with what I believe is the best decision for the district, and I have the fortitude to do that.
Thank you. So thank you to both of you for joining us tonight. Thank you again to KILJ and the Mount Pleasant School District for hosting. As a reminder, to cast your ballot, on May thirteenth, I understand early voting begins tomorrow at eight o'clock at the courthouse. So, thank you for coming and good night.
Lots of good questions tonight, and it's up to you voters of the Mount Pleasant Community School District if the answers were what you agree with and what you appreciate and who gave them. And May thirteenth, you'll make your decision. Will Mr. Leekde or Mr. Overberg be the next member of the Board of Education at the Mount Pleasant Community School District? Thank you for watching. Thank you to my sponsors, Griner Auto Body, Car Doctor, McDonald, Boneyard, Your Choice Family Restaurant, Gerling Repair, B&amp;B Propane, and the family of Jet Stops, Dutch Market, and Coffee Talk. And thanks to the Mount Pleasant Chamber and KILJ Radio for putting on this event tonight. And one more thing, stay friendly, Southeast Iowa.